All right. Good evening, Dillworth Glen and Felton School District. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota Directive to residents to stay at home, and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting of the Dillworth Glen and Felton School Board is being conducted in accordance with the Minnesota Stat thirteen point zero two one, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. Due to the health pandemic, the school board determined that it is not feasible for at least one board member or the superintendent to physically be present at the regular meeting location, and that it is not feasible for the public to attend this meeting at the regular meeting location due to the health pandemic. School board members are reminded to mute their microphone or phone when they are not speaking. School board members wishing to speak should use the in the left-hand corner that's waving at you. I will recognize you and determine the order in which school board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute the microphone or phone, speak, and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded, so access to recording will be made available on the school's district's website as soon as reasonably possible. All right, so since we are unable to do a pledge of allegiance, since we don't have a flag, I'm going to read the school's mission statement. In partnership with the communities, the mission of the Dillworth Glen and Felton School District is to educate individuals in the environment of trust and respect, so they become self-directed, responsible lifelong learners. All right, so we're going to do a roll call here. Lots of people on. All board members except Raleigh Gruel are present. He is not available this evening. Others present are Principals Wayne Lepard, Heidi Critchley, Marg O'Hilla, Joe Keefe, our Superintendent Brian Tigerson, IT Director John Jacobson, and Special Ed Director Mary Ann Martin. We also have Eric Exner joining us, Lee Dobrins, and Chris, I'm sorry if I butcher your name, Byowoski from Comstock and JLG joining us tonight. So thank you all. And I do see there's a phone number, and I'm wondering if that isn't Raleigh. Or other people. I'm not a hundred percent sure. So we will. We have two phone calls. Go ahead.
Matt with Comstock Construction is the four one two six four two six phone number.
Okay, thank you, Matt. And the other one?
Name.
Pardon me?
Schwab.
Schwab, thank you.
Yep, and the other one is Jason Flack with Comstock Construction. I'm having trouble logging in on my computer, so I had to call in. Sorry about that.
Okay, no, you're fine. Thank you both for joining us this evening. So now that we got their housekeeping done, we'll get on with this. To note, we have a couple changes to the agenda. We are adding action item ten point one. This is a MSBA contract for superintendent search. And then we are adding eleven point three. There will be a special board meeting on Monday, August seventeenth at five thirty. And currently, we have virtual, but we are going to talk about that tonight. This is for the filings for the school board candidacy. So those are the changes to the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
All right, motion by Amy. And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. And we'll do a roll call here. Just one second. All right, let's see. Laura?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi, but I have a question.
Oh, yep, go ahead.
Just make sure the numbers are correct. I think I think you said eleven point three.
So eleven eleven point three will be the special board meeting on Monday, August seventeenth.
Oh, okay, okay, I.
All right, and myself, I, motion carries six zero. There was no public comments tonight on our share drive. Is there anybody that would like to do any rebel recognition? All right, hearing no comments, we'll move on to reports. We've got six point one DGF Building Project Report. Brian, do you want Chris to go ahead and start presenting? I can stop presenting and then he can? You're on mute, Brian.
Sorry, sorry about that. Chris, Lee, Jason, if you guys would just go through everything regarding the bid package, and that way we can have all the questions at that time, and and then the board can make a decision whether the board wants to, and if there's recommendations to look at going with any of the the adjustments or the add-ons, so to speak. So how do you guys want to proceed?
I'll defer to you, Chris, or Jason, if you guys want to go through the bids.
Yeah, I'll take it over here and just kind of run through. Well, everything shook out last week for the bid process for the Dillworth big group two here, so I'll start presenting. One second here. All right, it says it should be coming through now. You guys all have it?
Yes.
Chris, thank you.
Okay, so I will start off here, just kind of giving you guys an overview of how the bid shook out compared to our design development budget, how the numbers came back, then I'll go on, and I'll run through all the bid tabs and our low contractors and who are recommending to do the work for each bid package. And then lastly, we'll kind of talk about each of the alternates and what you guys are going to be deciding on the night, and whether we're going to accept or not accept the list of ten alternates we have here. So initially here, just looking at this spreadsheet, this column C here, that's our design development budget. That's the prices we have with that. And E is our bid price and how the numbers came back after getting true confirmed bids from all these subcontractors on each bid package. Overall, we had a lot of competitive bids. Numbers came back really well. Nothing but positivity there during from the bid. A couple of these line items are construction divisions. You'll see there's a pretty good spread, but that's just by the way we packaged up the bids that, for example, a few of these are in division six, so you'll see division six higher, and these ones are less, but overall, we ended up just raw construction costs, but one point one eight million under budget, which definitely gives you guys some options here tonight with all the add alternates we have. And with all the contingencies, so we have our two and a half percent CM fee, our construction contingency, design contingency, and owner contingency. It puts us about one point three million under budget. So you just kind of look at this spreadsheet here, and it'll show that we're about twelve point eight percent under budget, which is awesome, gives you guys the options to kind of pick and choose here and what you'd like for alternates. I'll move on quick and go to the bid tab. So this is just how the numbers came in on bid day. That doesn't necessarily mean that the scopes align perfectly, but there's been a lot of calling around and making sure that these numbers are getting compared apples to apples, and not one contractor is bidding less because he's got less scope. But we verified this now, and these are true numbers that you can compare with. So we'll go down the line here from each bid package, starting the first one. Surveying, we have KLJ Engineering doing the survey. That's who is doing the big group one for both schools as well. Stematic will be doing the final cleaning. Demolition. We have Minnekey Johnson Company doing that with a combined carpentry package, so the number looks more here, but truly, it is the lowest bid when you include their combined with carpentry. So and just to touch, I may not have touched on this, but all these contractors that we're recommending here are truly the low bidders. There wasn't one that jumped out at us that we didn't want to use that was a low bidder, so we're accepting the low bids and and we're running with that. So next bid package, concrete dirt dynamics. We had one bid there, but I did put a budget together at three hundred and twenty thousand, so I know that's a competitive bid. Precast concrete, we have wells, concrete supplying and installing that. Concrete floor finishing, we have QC Companies. Masonry, Mortenson Masonry. Steel framing or steel supply is from Breezy Ironworks. And the steel erection is from Magnum Contracting. Carpentry packages that combined with Minnekey Johnson's demo package. Case work, we have TMI Systems Corporation supplying all the casework and finished carpentry materials. And we have fresh look painting, doing all the fluid applied waterproofing. Metal wall panels will be installed by Specialty Systems Incorporated. The membrane roofing, we have MJ Dollson Company of North Dakota doing that. A joint sealant, we have Willoughby Contracting doing that. Openings are basically door supplier is Central Door. Coiling doors, I didn't highlight it, but it's actually Twin City Garage Door here. Aluminum windows, we have Fargo Glass and Paint supplying and installing all the curtain walls and storefronts. Skylights, it's going to be by WL Hall Company. Gypsum board assemblies is going to be GNM Laughing Contractors. Tile is going to be Great Plains Flooring. Kusco ceilings and wall panels can be floor ceiling carpet one. Floor coverings is going to be Allstate's flooring. Trail painting for the painting. Wood athletic flooring in the gyms is by Jaywood Sports Flooring. Our food service contractor is going to be Cullen X. Gymnasium equipment is going to be supplied and sold by Center Stage Manufacturing Company. Scoreboards can be by Daktronics. The window shades by Interior Fairs. Telescoping bleachers by Safe LLC. Fire suppressions by Nova Fire Protection. Mechanical, Mission Mechanical was low. Electrical gets a little interesting here. Grothberg is technically low on the base bid, but when we start going into all these alternates, you can see that Rick Electric is actually lower on every single one of the alternates. So if we decide later to accept most of those alternates, or even I think alternate seven just alone puts them puts Rick Electric in at low, but we would say that we're good with either one of those contractors. So hover it shakes out here. If you guys are accepting or not accepting alternates, we're good with either one of those two. Earthwork. We had our low bidder withdraw his bid due to an estimating mistake, which put Asplin excavating as the new low. There. So next, then we have landscaping. We have pro landscapers doing that. That concludes all the bid tab rundown, so we can go to the list of alternates here. I just compiled this. I'm assuming you guys can still see this PDF that I'm sharing. I compiled a list of all ten alternates here. It's on, we got a page break, but all ten of them are here with the added price for each one, so I can run through, let you guys kind of know what each one of those are. But alternate one is the additional cabinetry and sinks in each one of the classrooms that didn't have one, have that already. That's an add of twenty eight thousand. Alternate two, adding our new ceiling tile, lighting and diffusers in main corridors. It's the add of thirty four thousand. Alternate three is to a deduct, actually to switch out the polished concrete and install LVT flooring instead. Alternate four is an add for a new food service cooler for thirty seven thousand. Alternate five, I thought storage case work, just adding casework in the storage areas for nine thousand. Six is a add of fifty two thousand five hundred for that varying depths of precast concrete face brick thickness. It's just a an architectural feature that adds a little bit of a design element to the exterior precast. Alternate seven is LED lighting around the skylights. That's add of twenty five hundred bucks. And the reason why that's so small is that's that alternate that would switch out Grothberg to Rick Electric alone, so that that's where you make up the ground to put Rick Electric in at low. Alternate eight. That's glazing safety and security film around the administration addition. That's sixteen thousand five hundred. Alternate nine, existing classroom technology infrastructure, so just the cabling for new technology in existing classroom areas would be twenty nine thousand. Ultimate number ten, that's no price change from Mission Mechanical to upgrade their front-end software for their temperature controls. And like I said earlier, with being with the twelve thirteen percent below budget, one point three million, all of these add up to a total of two hundred and eight thousand if you accept them all, except for this deduct. I feel that if you guys are willing or want to accept all those, I'd still be comfortable with the budget as it sits. I mean, we still have a million extra, knowing that we have Glendon upcoming. And that's just, it's the same bidding market. It's bidding next or two weeks from tomorrow, or sorry, a week from Wednesday. It's the same bidding market. I like how the bids have been coming back. I feel comfortable with our budgets for Glendon, so I would say if you guys are interested or want to accept all of these, we could do that, and then I would say I'm fine with that, so.
Chris, can you clarify? Did you say two hundred and eight thousand or two hundred and eighty?
Two hundred and eight, two zero eight comma five hundred. And that's that's accepting them all, except for this one deduct.
Okay. Lee or Jason, do either of you have anything to add to this?
Well, just ecstatic to see the numbers. I mean, that's terrific that we're able to get bidding in so that you can have an option to take these alternates. I think that's terrific, so and still have some leftover to help us out with the next one if we need it. So just a couple of questions maybe I have, Chris. I'm not familiar with Bleacher Company, Safe LLC. Wondering if you guys have had experience with them, just kind of what your what your thoughts were with them.
I know they're one of the main players. It stands for like Seating and Athletic Facilities Incorporated, or something along the lines of that. I mean, they're basically known for their bleachers.
Oh, is that is that Tim Tobin's group? I always I always think of them as a different name, but maybe that's because I'm not used to using the acronym for them.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I can't.
Okay. I think it is.
This is Southern Bleachers, then? I think that's who they represent. If that's the case, then I'm totally comfortable with them. I'm just not used to hearing the acronym for their name.
Stadium Steve in it?
Yeah, Stadium Steve, yep.
Yeah, I think we talked to them in January.
Yep. I got the folder right here. It is Tim Tobin.
Awesome, perfect. Okay, good. I just, like I said, I wasn't used to hearing that acronym for their name. And then I'm not familiar with the painters that you had mentioned in the list. Again, just curious if you have any concerns about them. I'm assuming not if you're recommending them, but.
We use trail painting. He's low, and we use him for a lot of projects, and we would actually recommend him. He does good work, so.
Okay. And then on the dirt dynamics, if you maybe just explain a little more, what was the difference on there? Did you read their bid? I'm assuming you did, and then they said there was an error and they pulled it.
Right, correct. So I went and verified after. So they were at like fifty seven thousand. And the next guy was a hundred and twenty nine in a group of four, and I knew right away something jumped out at me, and I verified that they just didn't acknowledge the GeoTech report at all, and they assumed zero soil corrections. When that's that's kind of open for interpretation there, but everybody else at least assumes something for it, so.
And then you got unit pricing on the excavation still, correct?
Correct. I might not have.
Did they? Was Asplin right? Did they? How did they track on the unit pricing?
Here, I think I'm still sharing, but Asplin was at twenty eight fifty, so they were actually the lowest.
Still low. Awesome, okay. Those are the only questions I had. Thank you.
Yeah.
Jason, did you want to add anything in?
No, I think Chris covered everything pretty well. The only thing we should just maybe have a little bit of dialogue is just the electrical and accepting of the alternates and who's going to be low. So I don't know if, Chris, if you want to just kind of maybe elaborate on that just a little bit, just so they fully understand the consequences or the differences there.
Sure, I guess overall between Grothberg Electric and Rick Electric, they're both reputable contractors that we wouldn't have any issue with either one of them truly being low. And just to kind of try and stay honest, we just select between the two without burning any bridges and maintaining our working relationship with both of them. We just take the low bidder. So I guess it takes a combination of different smaller alternates. So like this one there, what is that? Eighteen hundred bucks lower. This one there, fifteen hundred bucks. So if you add that, add these three up, that'll make up for the five grand difference that they're they're more five grand more expensive than Grothberg. So if you do the combination of one, two, and four alternates, and don't accept any others, it would put Rick at low, or if you just accept alternate number seven, it would put Rick at low, but if you don't accept any, technically, it's Grothberg's project.
Chris, this is Lee Grothberg is on our bid tech one. Am I remembering that correct?
That's correct, yep.
Any pros and cons to that?
I guess the pro is they know the building. But there's not really a cost factor to that. I mean, the cost is what it is for them to bid here.
I just, you know, maybe from, I guess, the question I would have from a consistency standpoint, maybe you know, there shouldn't be a ton of overlap, but just if there's any benefit of having somebody continue on.
I don't know if Schwab would want to touch on that at all, or Flack, and if there's any benefit they think there, if they're concerned about that at all or not, but.
This is Matt. I think that either electrician is probably qualified to do the job. There's definitely, you know, the benefit of having the consistency of one electrician consistent throughout the entire project.
Sure.
Just in familiarity with the with the buildings and familiarity with the project team, and so I guess that would be.
And to be clear, to be clear, we've worked with Rick Electric as well, and I have no issues with any of those. Those are all, all three of those are really good contractors. Just one last question.
Thank you, Lee. Do we want to have discussion board right now about these alternates? Or do we, would you prefer that we wait till we do the bid package too? I kind of feel like we should do it now while you guys are all on the line. I see Ronnie raising their hand. Go ahead, Ronnie.
I need clarification on that alternate seven, that precast thing. Was that to put the variable depth on the outer brick face or not?
That's correct.
But we could we were one time talking, just kind of consistently staying with the single depth thing on there, right? So we could save the fifty three thousand.
That is what is in the base bid. That's right, Ronnie.
I think just to start the conversation, our number one, and Lee could pull up our goal. Our number one concern with this project is safety and security. And when you look at these alternates, a couple of them really pop out to me personally. Oh, I think I can't go down here. But number one, classroom cabinetry and sinks. I think the sinks would add some, you know, safety as children can wash their hands better in the classrooms. And also number eight, the glazing safety and security film. You know, I think that's a benefit that we've talked about in the past, you know, helping with intruders if someone was trying to shoot at the building. So I don't know if the other board members want to chime in here, what your thoughts are. I mean, Ronnie, you've been through this before with alternates and doing this. What is your thoughts and how much you would like to see us, you know, pick, select some of these? Do we do them all? Do we do part of them? What are your thoughts?
Well, I guess if I, and that one, I don't think we need to do the double depth bricks over there myself. I guess I would skip number six for sure. And, you know, we probably wouldn't accept three, right? Because we don't need to deduct it. It's not that much. I'm not sure what, or maybe Jake can answer what that number nine, that existing classroom tech infrastructure, how much importance is that to what? And I know we talked before or two about she wanted, you know, that other food service cooler too. So some of them are interesting things, and then we got to watch if we start adding these other skylights and stuff, then like you say, then we got to switch to Rick Electric, so.
Do you have any thoughts or, oh, it's Jake, is that you?
Yeah.
Number nine, please.
The the electrical in that number nine is essentially infrastructure to have electrical connections and ethernet network connections in our existing classrooms. So it's the same same type of hookups is our rooms that are being modified. So it's a to keep the rooms consistent. That's the main goal with that one.
Okay, thank you. Amy, what are your thoughts?
You know, thrilled to hear how the bid package came in, and considering the big number that Chris gave us, what, two hundred and eight thousand dollars? With an extra million dollar little cushion there for Glendon for the unexpected things, I guess I would be happy to approve all the alternates at this time.
Okay, thanks, Amy. David, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think I agree with Amy. I think we're in a good spot. This is the time to do it. If we're going to make additions to, you know, try to do some of these things later, to the extent we want to do them, it's always going to be more expensive. So now's the time to do it, if we're going to do it. And I mean, we have them as alternates for a reason. But I think they're important. I get Ronnie's position on precast. But it's relatively not a huge dollar amount, so I'd even think that's a good, a good thing. The aesthetics of that would be nice.
All right, thank you, David. Laura, what are your thoughts?
I guess just going along with what David said, that, you know, now would be the time to do all of this, and if we're at a good position financially, I guess. I guess I'm not really quite sure, Ronnie, what you, with the alternate six, what exactly does that mean? I don't. I'm not.
Maybe Chris can explain it better than I can.
Yep, yeah, I'll jump in here. So all that is, on the precast panel, it's going to be the the build of the gym box. There's a thin brick on there, and JLG, they wanted or added a added design element of doing varying varying depths of the thin brick. So you'll see that it'll kind of pop out about a half inch or so, just to make it dress it up a little bit, make it look a little prettier.
Could I could I offer to share my screen? I've got the rendering up if that's helpful to anybody?
Yes, please.
And how much of Dillworth is this covering?
Sorry, Ronnie, one second here. Is that coming through?
Yeah.
Yep.
So that that would actually cover everything here on the on the box of the gym. And so if I zoom in, I guess that's as far as I can get here. Here we go. There we go. You can see these vertical lines are indicating the spots where that brick is thicker. And so it comes forward in some areas and it's set back in others. And so the intent of that is to give a shadow line, and I believe we did get this in the addendum there too, where there's actually a different brick texture there as well. And again, the goal of that was being a really large box like this. Now, this this view you're seeing is one thing. There are windows, and it's the main entry, and it's a much more interesting side of the building. But the west side is really just one large wall of precast with brick on it. Our thought is that this helps break the massing of that box up considerably. So while it is an aesthetic thing, and I would certainly not be suggesting anything about it if we had any kind of budgetary issues, but I think there is a benefit to it from an aesthetic standpoint. I'll just put it that way.
Thank you, Lee.
Explains that a little bit.
Yep, Sandy, are you on? Can you give us your thoughts? You there, Sandy? Well, we're waiting for Sandy to maybe hop on here. I did talk to Raleigh, and he was.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, I'm on. You can hear me now? Okay. I'm in agreement with all of it, except number three. I am still a stickler. I want polished concrete. Not the LVT tile.
Just just to add on that, that the base bid is polished concrete, and that all. Just, just to add on that, that it, the base bid is polished concrete and that alternate would be changing it to L V T instead of. Polish concrete. So that's a deduct. So if you don't accept that one, you will get polished concrete.
Okay, okay, then I'm, then I'm good with that.
Okay. Well, I think I hit everybody. I did talk to Raleigh and he was in support of all the alternates. Um, he thought the price point was good and um. So that was his two cents. So I think that was great discussion. Um, Ronnie, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, if we had to cut back that, that. Uh, double depth on the brick would be it, but. I've always liked the looks of the more on there. I thought, you know, better look than anything we can do on the brick. I. I like, I just think we need to show off the building a little bit. So I'm in agreement with it if everybody else is, so.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Thank you, thank you. Um, I appreciate uh Comstock and J L G being with us tonight and for your guys' hard work on this and. Um, your discussion and questions. Uh, you guys are invaluable to us. So thank you so much. Um, any, anything else with the building? Project Brian, do you want to chime in on anything?
No, I'm just, I'm hoping we're gonna save enough money that we can actually do some extra things for our courtyards over Glendon. Raleigh will be extremely happy with that.
Yeah, that's the first thing he said to me is like, we need to do the science courtyard. So. That was the first thing out of his mouth when we talked today. So um. All right, um, let's move on to six point two board committee reports. Did anybody have a board committee report? Nope, no board committee reports. All right, Brian, the next one's you. Six point three superintendent report.
Okay, got a few things. Um, I'm just gonna walk through a couple and then basically we're gonna. As an admin cabinet, we're just gonna. Provide some updates uh as far as everything that is going on. Um, because there is a lot. Uh, we know that. Uh, I think all the board members are aware of virtual summer seminar. Um, if there is anyone who wants. Um, to be involved in any of those virtual. Summer seminars, there's like four different ones. Um, and I don't know if you, if uh all of you had a chance to look through that. Uh, but again, it, these are good things. If uh, if you do want uh to attend those. And the good thing is once you register, it's two hundred and some bucks, if I remember right. I think that's gonna give access to all four. And they record those. So whether you can make them on that day or not, you'll still have uh access to all of the videos with it. So that's something, just let me know. Uh, like I said, we have professional development funds, so uh that's a good thing. Um, secondly, um consent agenda. My resignation, I'm just going on record saying officially for the public and what else not. That uh I am retiring. At the end of this year, um. I, it is, it has been a great run and I look forward to uh putting together a nice. Short. Letter for the board. Um, but I do. I do have a few things that I would like to put in there and, and so the public can hear. I. Um, I, I just look at. This group, this board. How much. You've come together on a common goal and I am. To say that I'm proud of you as a, a community member and a taxpayer. Would be an understatement. I just think, I, I think you guys are doing a wonderful job. And I truly hope. That any of you that can continue to make the commitment to stay on the board. Um, please do. Because it's nee, it's necessary. Uh, that continuity is absolutely critical. Uh, so I, I just. I'm not gonna say anymore on that right now because I, I just. But I do have very. Um, I'm very appreciative on how well you have. I, I, I just have such appreciation for the fact that you come to common goals. About kids. And I just, I, I, I will say that to people over and over again. I, I have great admiration for that. Um, I, just so the board is aware. I've been contacted by uh the flag. Uh, radio station. Uh, they want to do some interviews with all of the superintendents in the FM area. As far as on. Preparation work for fall. And I, I, like I said, I've been in communication with them and I. I just, uh, I made. I told them, why don't you wait until the governors, the governor comes out? And uh, you know, then we can have some more discussions. There, I have, I have no issue about going on and. Um, you know, really it's the principals that uh, the principals of Mary Ann that. Um, have to put together all the plans for their sites. Um, you know, I'm there as a, as a resource so that can bounce off things and, and then to try to figure out. Uh, working with Eric, how we can come up with the funds to make it happen. And there will definitely be communication with the county. Um, I'm. Uh, I've been in contact with Brandon over at uh Maps uh over at Morehead. Uh, regarding some of the county. Uh, cares money. And uh, hoping we can have some discussions with uh Clay County regarding that. I believe they have. About seven point two million dollars of federal money. To help out with uh some of the COVID planning. And Otter Tail is an example. Otter Tail County. Uh, did a distribution uh plan. With uh local businesses. Nonprofit school districts. On how they were distributing some of those funds. So this is not unprecedented. And uh, so you will be hearing more about that hopefully by the next board meeting. On how that, some of that may be distributed out from the county. So those are some of the main pieces. Um. This is where I'm going to have, I'm going to just start. Uh, showing a, a number of items again. Because I think it's important for the public. And so I'm just gonna take over for a minute. And then I'm gonna show you how this has a direct effect. Again, you've seen this, I believe, from the fire marshal. I've said it for a while before we hit the fourth of July. Um. I've, I've raised the anxiety. There's no question about that with the admin team and I'm. I'm sure they won't mind sharing at some points on that. But when you look at. These protocols. Um, on, again. With the amount of square feet. Per occupant. Our general classrooms, twenty square feet. Music twenty fifty fifty thirty-five for child for preschool. And then cafeteria is fifteen, gyms, exercise area is fifty, notice the locker rooms fifty. And then the individual business is a hundred. What is critical here is this is the general. If, if we didn't have any pandemic. This would be the square footage per occupant. We are having to do planning. For fifty percent capacity. So when you hear, when we, any of us, or anybody in the public hears about. Uh, planning for the fall. And will we be direct? Will we be hybrid? Will we be um distance? We start getting into these discussions. To put it in perspective. So this is the column, Dilworth, and then the same thing. I've been meeting with the principals. And as we've had our discussions. Um, they are identifying classrooms. That will become a problem. At fifty percent capacity. Notice the third grade classrooms. And we do this based on the following. So here's our enrollment. And our enrollment, fifth grade, for instance, one twenty-one, we have five sections presently. Plan for. Typically, we have had. Um. I, I think all of you the, that have uh been veteran um. Board members know that typically we lose some kids. As they go from fourth grade to fifth grade. So we've started out with the cons, with the idea of five sections. With the idea that we've typically lost ten to fifteen kids in fifth grade. Problem is right now, if we do not lose students. Which is a good thing. You got five sections at one twenty-one. Now you're talking twenty-four. Students per, per section. So if you go back to this. And you look at the Glendon site. There's your fifth grade classrooms at fifty percent. We have a problem. So. Our discussions today, I just wanted to alert the board for now. Um, the principals are going to be having. Birth the five leadership team meetings. They're gonna have six to twelve meetings. They're gonna have site meetings. Basically, this is gonna be going on week, every single week until we get school beginning. There's just no way around it. There will probably be a couple of meetings a week. Um, if you look at these, these are classrooms that right now at fifty percent capacity. Are over the amount it could be. So for us to go direct instruction every day of the week is gonna be impossible. And that's what's critical for the public to understand. This isn't a judgment thing. This isn't subjective. This is simply based on. The logistics load capacities of the classrooms. So our leadership teams need to sit down and talk about options. And that's what they're working on right now. That's what they'll be working on the next two weeks. Um. So before I move on, does, do you have questions on, on this? Because this, this is the heart of the logistics. Any feedback, any? Reaction?
Do we even know if we're gonna be at the fifty percent level yet?
Everything that we're hearing is fifty percent. Um, Ronnie, the issue. I know there's, I've heard at least one state that's at twenty-five percent capacity based on. Where. That the fact that the state itself. Um, has some clusters. And that's one of the reasons we have to do all this planning. Because. If you, if you think of it from this standpoint. Um, you look at the Dilworth site. And I'm gonna go back to the enrollments. Here's third grade at Dilworth, ninety-four students, four sections. We don't have any more classrooms upstairs. At Dilworth. We have four rooms for fourth grade, four rooms for third grade. That's it. Middle school needs all their classrooms. So it isn't as if we have a room sitting there. So then the question comes down to this is twenty-three to twenty-four. And remember it's occupancy. We haven't even talked about the teacher or if there's parents. So we gotta work within that. Then. We started looking at, here's the classrooms. Second floor. Third grade nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-one and eighteen. Fourth grade has twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-four. You can see what may be coming. In some of these discussions. Do you do some flip flop?
Brian, Sandy, Sandy had a question here. I'm gonna let her jump in.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, and I know we haven't even touched the high school yet. But, but uh. Something that I want to say as far as the high school. We do not want these seniors coming back. Being separated from their classmates. So if we have to go to less. Then the seniors need to be a day, the juniors need to be a day, whatever it is. So these kids can be together with their classmates.
Yeah, I think, I think there's some ideas on that Sandy that, um, and again, I'm not going to. Um, the, the principals can jump in at any point that they, they want to. I can, I can tell you in the discussions we've been having. Basically. There, you know, there's some plans. About. What groups of kids need to be in the buildings the most? The younger the students, the more likely they need to be in the buildings. Okay? The older that they are, they can have a little bit more time that could be potentially a distance. So the hybrid model. Could be that high school students come two days, you, you, you may have, that they're there two days a week. You split the class. Into half. Because if you look at the Glendon site for the high school. At fifty percent, you got a lot of rooms. That can only go to twenty-two at most. So if you take those classrooms, if you take those particular classes. And you go with an A B type of schedule. That way they can stay with their classmates. But you're gonna have certain kids on, on Mondays, certain kids on Tuesdays. And then they, the same would go on Thursdays and Fridays. We are having discussions as an admin cabinet. Um, and again, uh. When I'm done. When I'm done going through this stuff, uh, ask questions of any of the principals. Um, in general, I think we have consensus as an admin cabinet. That we would utilize Wednesday as a deep cleaning day. That way there's two days. We do deep cleaning. They come back Thursday and Friday. Wednesday can be that day that we have help with, with certain kids that need a little bit more flexibility, more help, more one-on-one. And we have them in just certain locations. Um, but in general. Um, even at the middle school and high school, all students would be at the building for a minimum of two days a week. The elementaries, as you can see by capacity. We can do four days a week. We can do four days a week. Both Joe and Margot, we've had discussions. We think we can make that work. But we want to put in a deep cleaning day in the middle of the week. Safety and security is critical. And, but it brings up lots of questions. How do we do the bus routes? And do we have bus routes specifically for elementary? Do we do other bus routes for middle school and high school? Do we have A days, B days, whatever? There's still a ton. Of logistics to go through with this. Questions for me about capacity. Because I've said it for at least. I can tell you the admin cabinet's been hearing this from me because I've been scaring myself for a month. About it. I've said for a long time, the fire marshal load capacity is gonna drive this.
Uh, go ahead, Brian, or go ahead, David.
Brian, would, 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 if you're looking at four days. Would there be a plan to extend the length of the day?
We don't need to because it can be distance on that, on that fifth day. So we'll get full credit, David. So that part isn't an issue. What's nice is. If we want to focus that we've got some kids that need a little extra help. They, they need more help. They can be the ones that are there on, on, on that day and we can just work with certain rooms. Uh, that we have those students in. Uh, again, that's gonna all go back to the planning. With the leadership teams at the elementary level, middle school and high school levels. Those are gonna be those discussions. If it's truly about relationships with kids. We should be trying to figure out ways of maximizing kids onsite as much as possible. This cannot be an adult issue. This has to be a student needs issue. And you're gonna hear that from me over and over and everybody that works in this district will hear it over and over, I hope, from all of us. Because that should, student learning should drive our decision making. In this. And we should be looking at ways of maximizing kids being able to be in the buildings. And whatever that looks like.
Brian, Sandy had another comment or question.
Sorry, Brian. I'm gonna say about student need, but I know that you're saying about elementary kids needing that and I, I would agree with that. But I don't think that our high schools students need any less than that. Um, I think that looking at two days a week for potentially high school students. Uh, is not enough. Um, I would like to look, have them look at four half days at least. They can do distant learning part of it, but at least four half days and then that one deep cleaning day on a Wednesday.
And, and Sandy, um, we can do that depending upon. If we want to go half days. Then we're talking about half of the kids. Come in the morning, half the kids come in the afternoon. Because if you look at the room capacities. Here's part of the issue. Look at the room capacities, you cannot put all the kids. All sixteen hundred kids in the building at the same time.
No, but couldn't, couldn't you have like juniors and seniors? No, but couldn't, couldn't you have like juniors and seniors morning and ninth and tenth grade in the afternoon and have the teachers move from room to room? And not the students go from certain classrooms that wouldn't allow that number of capacity people.
Yeah, I understand that Sandy, but here's, here's an example. Take a social studies class that has twenty-eight kids. Okay? That particular section has twenty-eight kids. You're gonna have to split those kids up into two rooms. You only have one teacher.
Um, Amy wanted-
Do that. But you see where I'm, I'm going? That's why either you split the actual classes up into half and have them, only half the kids at one time. You could have half the kids in the morning, the other half the kids nine through twelve in the afternoon. But you have seven periods, and how are you going, then you're gonna be abbreviating all the classes into a half-day schedule in the morning and do the same thing in the afternoon if you want them there the same amount of time.
Brian, I think one of the things that we have to remember is that this is coming out on Thursday, but this is something that we're starting with. And that it's fluid and it could change. We could at some point be distance learning, another point we could be more, um, you know, have all the kids back in. Um, it's just, it's so fluid right now is what I'm getting from my research, and that's the way we have to look at it.
And what I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying to remind everybody of is as long as we have to operate at fifty percent capacity, principals, can we bring all sixteen hundred kids in at the same time?
No.
Okay.
Uh, Amy, go ahead.
Um, I, you know, I'm just, I can hear, I understand what Sandy's saying, but at the same time too, um, just thinking of, of the capacity of if you have one group of kids that come in the morning, what kind of cleaning regimen would have to happen before you had a new set of kids come in in the afternoon? You know, how does that work with our custodial staff and that kinda stuff? Whereas if you have the same group of kids in all day long on a Monday, then you do a good clean Monday evening and then Tuesday, you know what I'm saying? So I think that's kind of one of the logistics we'd have to think about if we did half-days as well, is what kind of cleaning would have to occur in between times? And then also, how do you do lunch with group A that's in the morning and then group B that comes in the afternoon? Um, so then also with that being said, just what kind of commu- communication should we have after, um, Thursday when Waltz declares whatever he's gonna say? Um, just looking ahead, doesn't have to have an answer now, but figure something out, how we, um, communicate that, not only with the public, but then within ourselves. Um, and when you want that to occur, so.
Um, Brian, you, you wanted us to jump in, you said? So we've been, we've been working on a, kind of a, a school planning um, guide, so to speak, that outlines the three different models that we think could occur this year. And with scenarios and explanations that we're, we're, we're working on as an admin team to um, share out with you and with the, the staff and the community um, with the what-ifs, and then once we get the kind of more direction, we're able to tweak it. So we have kind of a, a guide started for that.
And I, we've talked to our site leadership teams already, um, and we have told them to be expecting some kind of communication from us. And then for all of the staff members to discuss, once we have some time to kind of think about it, whatever Governor Walz says, and, and move forward. So one of the things that we talked about at the elementary site leadership team because we've been meeting together, which has been phenomenal. Our site, elementary site leadership teams, I have to give props to, they have been extremely phenomenal through this. Um, you know, we told them, you know, give us forty-eight hours or just give us some time to di- to digest this. And then what we're gonna do, and now four of us have planned to, um, do a staff meeting, elementary are gonna do it jointly. So elementary is on the same page and then middle school and high school. So they know that that staff meeting is coming as well.
Okay, well, I think you guys are being diligent and, and, you know, really we're stuck until he makes his announcement on Thursday. So we can sit and talk about all the what-ifs tonight, but truly I think you guys are trying to find the scenarios and pinpoint the, the issues and, um-
Yeah, one more for you, Lindsay.
Yep, go ahead, go ahead. I just, these nice gentlemen from JLG and Comstock are probably waiting for us here, but sorry about that.
And, and, and I, I did have a conversation with Matt and, um, I can't remember everybody I've talked to today, but I think it was, I think Chris also. The bottom line is we're gonna be, we, we, we know there's gonna be discussions tomorrow with the oversight committee meeting as far as prioritizing what can get done by the time school starts and what else not. And it's one of the reasons I wanted to go through this is, as you can see, um, there will be um, some potential variability at, at grade levels as far as how much potentially kids are gonna be there. And if we, if we look at the logistics from the standpoint, if, if I'm a, as a parent, um, and I'm looking at daycare and everything else. And as far as kids being there and, and kids being able to be at home, you look at what we did in the spring, everybody was home. And now we're talking about, we're gonna try to maximize, get kids there as much as we possibly can. But when we also look at daycare and who needs, who cannot be home by themselves compared to age groups was. And if we start doing half-days, and we also have to take a, a serious look at what kind of transportation costs are we gonna be dealing with when we're talking about running buses in the middle of the day picking up more routes? And we're not gonna get any more money. So that's some logistics. Now, before I get done, um, and some of you asked a question, let me, uh, about our survey with the parents. So we have data. You'll notice this shows eight hundred nineteen responses. Huge, huge responses. And so the first one, what grade level are your students in? Check all that applies. So we had, I mean, these are really, when you look at the numbers, the fact that we're talking averaging over a hundred, and a lot of our grades have one hundred to a hundred and twenty, maybe one thirty. These are really good amount of responses from households. And then I'm just gonna walk through each of these, because there's just a few charts. The way it was asked, of course, is you'll notice, um, would you be comfortable having your elementary? Now remember, some people responded not applicable. So when you see this part about all the part in green, it's really a matter of trying to focus in on the rest of the graph. So if you look at, um, would you be comfortable having your elementary age students? Forget about the thirty-one percent because those are people that don't have elementary kits. So you got about seventy percent. And then here's our percentages. Three hundred and twenty-six or thirty-nine point eight percent said yes, and then another nineteen, yes, but concerns. So those are pretty strong numbers. Only nine, less than ten percent of the respondents said that they weren't comfortable or unsure at this point. Middle school, fifty, basically fifty-one percent of the ones, if you go to those totals of the fifty-one percent, it's over forty-one. So again, those are high numbers, about eighty percent of the ones that had that age group responded level of comfort with concerns, which will go into what the major concerns to make them feel better. And here's the high school. Same way, about forty-five percent of these parents had high school age. Over thirty-eight percent of those responded that they were comfortable at some point, either yes or with concerns. In each of these cases, we're talking less than ten percent that are not comfortable. Unsure. And here's the biggest, I think this is a real important one. Those are the factors that would make them feel more comfortable. The first one jumps out like crazy. We actually have a meeting tomorrow at one o'clock, the whole admin cabinet. Um, our custodian, uh, Tammy, um, our, uh, nursing services are all meeting at one o'clock just to talk about cleaning protocols. And how we're going to move forward with all of this, so that we can again put out information to the public. Here's all the things we're looking at doing, including the deep cleaning in the middle of the week. Um, the principals have the task of going through the cafeterias, putting those maps down, figuring out how do we put the spaces down for the tables to meet the needs so that we can have kids assigned to particular tables to make sure that we're minimizing the amount of cross-contact with the kids. So all of that is being worked on as we speak. And the last one about the masks, there isn't a big shock. I don't think Raleigh would love to see that one. Um, would increase your comfort level. Twenty-eight percent no opinion and thirty-three percent no. And again, you tend to send your students to school this fall if we have onsite, uh, instruction. So only four percent said no. And we will also have discussions and provide options for those families. There is a distinct difference between homeschooling and homebound. If it's homebound, there's still DGF students, we're working directly with them. We're trying to meet the health conditions of the students and having teachers work with them and they stay enrolled at DGF. So as we blend in and out of distance, hybrid, you know, whatever it happens to be, there are students continually. And we don't have to worry about that homeschool thing and will it work together in tangent with us? And here's, hybrid was the top one. People were more comfortable with a hybrid. Um, as far as if you're going to be a hybrid, I feel, I'm, I'm happy with that, that people are understanding, hey, if you gotta go hybrid, you have to go hybrid. Whatever that would look like. And transportation-wise, about half. And we have some ideas on that. I've had, uh, discussions with Morehead about how their, um, Morehead's actually looking at having adults on the buses so that they can actually check, do the, the gauges on the, on, on the students, ask the questions and all that on the buses. And we have some options that we think we can do the same thing. So we, you know, we're not there yet. There's got a lot of discussions that need to be, that need to take place, but um, I wanted to make sure that you had a chance to see this tonight. And even for the public to see that, yeah, this was important. We're looking at this right away. And those are huge amount of responses, eight hundred and some responses over the course of a weekend. That's pretty good. Any questions on this?
Um, Brian, I saw on our MSP highlights I sent out that the federal government had approved a hundred and five billion dollars in federal spending for schools. Are you, uh, do you know any much about that or how that would affect each individual state or school district?
Is this new money as of today or existing money?
Um, I think it was a couple of days ago it was sent out on our thing. I think it was new money. I, I feel like it was new money. It was like gonna be seventy-some billion to K through twelve and thirty-some to universities. And Amy's raising her hand, maybe she knows.
I, I think that's, um, one of the same articles we read, and I think that was an incentive to school districts, um, or maybe to the governors to allow school districts to go back to full-time in-school class learning. So if you did take that model and you went all, all in and, and back to the school, then you were eligible for that extra money. You can correct me if I'm wrong though. I don't, I'm-
I'm curious if you'd heard about it, Brian.
Well, they, they, they have some grants. Uh, you know, like everything else, some of this money is going into grants, some of it's going over to, remember, there's distributions to the counties and if the counties work with the school districts and nonprofits and such. But as, as you can see, one of our issues is, and this is gonna be for any school districts that are at capacity. If you're at capacity, you're not gonna have the space to have all the kids there if you have to go to fifty percent. And imagine if we have to go to twenty-five percent. You know, you're talking, you're talking about in VOTAC areas, for instance, in the VOTAC rooms. And I'll just show you one as an example real quick. So the Woods Room. There's a square footage, sixteen hundred sixty-eight. It's fifty square feet per occupant. Then you gotta go to a hundred square feet at fifty percent capacity, and then two hundred square feet at twenty-five percent capacity. Only eight students can be in that room, even though you have sixteen hundred square feet. So if we get down to twenty-five percent because we have some clusters in our region, that's what we're gonna be dealing with. So we, the principals have to be coming up with scenarios based on fifty percent, twenty-five percent. It's not gonna matter if the governor says, we're gonna give you local control. The local control's gonna come down to, can you meet the fire marshal orders?
Go ahead, Amy.
Um, any discussions across the boards at site leadership and, um, about using the theater in, uh, greater capacity since it's such a large room? Or is that off the table since it's cloth seats in there? How is that conversation going?
We have- It's been brought up, but not in detail yet. We had a site team meeting about a week or week and a half ago, um, just in generalities about this stuff. But it's definitely probably gonna be, be used in some fashion. Again, you know, some of this, you gotta think about middle, any secondary school where we're going to be looking, it, it's not as black and white, so to speak, as an elementary with the, the cohort of a class. We've gotta deal with every period and moving kids around. Um, so uh, just a lot of factors on that. But yeah, it's been talked about with the theater and the bandroom.
And board members, if you, if you happen to take a look at these two numbers, here's our locker rooms. So, as, as you can tell, th- these are, these are big issues logistics-wise.
Sandy had another question or comment. Go ahead, Sandy.
Um, I, I'm gonna take mine off the table, but I, I liked the idea of the, the theater. Great, great thought, Amy.
Um, I, I think our, I think what I'm gathering from being in healthcare and being at work today was my first day back at pulmonary rehab. Capacity has changed in every every factor or school. And our- That's what's happening in real time. So I, pardon me?
Oh, you're cutting out for a minute.
Oh, sorry. So, you know, I think we need to move forward with keep doing the planning that you guys are doing. I think you have a lot of great questions. Look at your site leadership teams. Um, hopefully Minnesota Department of Ed will give us some direction along with Minnesota Department of Health, but I think you guys are asking the right questions and, and really until he makes his announcement on Thursday, you guys are kind of at a standstill and, and I think you're doing as best as you can to think of every scenario possible. So, um, Brian, do you have anything else you need to add tonight?
No, I think, I think I've given you guys enough tonight, right?
And, and I know that everybody's anxiety is high. I, I one hundred percent understand. Um, and I, I just hang in there and keep putting the kids first and what, what will be best for them. Um, and that's where we need to keep our focus. So thank you guys for your diligently and, and thank you everybody for the good conversation about it. I know we're all frustrated, but let's just hang in there together and you know, we have to work together to get this accomplished. So our kiddos are worth it. There are- Our kiddos are worth it, there are future, hopefully they'll never go through this when they're older. I hope, never. Okay, so um with that being said, let's move on to seven point one. Approval of our July thirteenth, twenty twenty meeting, do I have a motion?
Moved.
Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by. I got Ronnie, Sandy, but thank you. And um let's do a roll call vote here, Laura.
Hi.
Amy.
Hi.
Ronnie.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Sandy. Sandy, are you and I?
Hi.
And myself, I, motion carries six zero. All right, the consent. Thank you, Sandy, I got it.
Yes.
Yep. Got it. Yep, I got you, Sandy, thank you. Um, consent agenda, uh, claims and accounts, uh, Eric, I'm gonna let you read that number for us, please.
Yep, two hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars and thirty-three cents.
Thank you. We also, our treasury report, um. Approval and file for the audit for the June twenty twenty treasury report, we have the Minnesota liquid asset and max accounts. Activity accounts report. Um, we're gonna approve the recognition tonight of Lydia Amundsen, a paraprofessional effective the end of this past school year. Approve the resignation of Ryan Lisk, custodian effective July seventeenth. Approve the resignation of Kristen Arneson, high school English teacher, effective the end of the twenty nineteen, twenty, nineteen, twenty, twenty school year. And Brian, we are going to approve your retirement to the effective June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. Uh, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, motion by Amy, is there a second?
Mm-hmm.
Second by David, Sandy's got her hand up, let's uh go ahead, Sandy, you have a question? Go ahead, Sandy.
I'll second.
Okay, Laura?
Nope, nope, I'm just trying to make a motion.
Yep, yep. Go ahead, Laura.
I'm just trying to make a motion.
I am just curious with the custodial staff, where we're at with that and if. We're gonna need to have more. People in that department with the ramping up of all of. How that's all going to look and especially losing one, how many did we have before Ryan's recognition?
Um, they have been, uh, Tammy's been interviewing people. Um, in anticipation. Um, so. To just. Put in perspective, Laura, we're we're going to. We are preparing that we may need. To be looking at. Whether it happens to be in in all of our non-certified areas, whether it be the custodians. Um, our paraprofessionals. Um, there is a high likelihood. I should tell the board that. I may be putting something together, I uh have the discussions with. The admin cabinet. Um, and I I think I mentioned this at the last board meeting. But I think we have to take a serious look potentially. On coming up with. For our certified subs. We know that we have a hourly rate and a daily rate. Um, I think we may have to come up with a yearly rate. And right now, you think of the yearly with the the certified. They have a long-term sub-rate. But that's because they sub for the same teacher. Then it goes to the master agreement. Um, all of the superintendents in the region are extremely worried, I think all the principals are about having subs. So Laura, whether it's the non-certified or the certified. We're not gonna know a lot of this stuff until everybody hears from the governor. And then a lot of people have told us they're gonna make their decisions on if they're gonna be returning after the governor makes his decision. So. Stay tuned for the first August board meeting. For more info on that.
All right, thank you, great question, um. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, uh, roll call vote here, Sandy?
Yes.
Uh, Laura?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Myself is I and David?
Hi.
All right, motion carries six zero. Okay, so nine point one, we have the door site bid package. Uh, this is uh for approval of number two. Um. Let's go ahead and get a motion and please whoever makes a motion, let's go ahead and do the alternate package with it as well. Minus the item number, uh, the polished concrete. Leave that one out. Is that alternate three?
No, I'll make a motion on that basis.
Okay, so we got a motion by David, Amy, are you getting on solid ground?
Yep, so to include alternate bid package excluding item line number three.
I. Believe so, I'm trying to look up.
Yep, alter number three is the polished concrete.
Okay, so we'll leave the polished concrete in there. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, any further discussion, board members?
And that will change the electrical, correct, Chris? As far as the awarding because of the alternates?
That is correct, it would be Rick Electric Lowenstein Groberg.
Okay.
Let let's talk as a. Board here, do, does anybody have an objection against that going to the different architect or not architect, different electric? Any thoughts on that, Ronnie?
Well, I think as long as they're reputable, either one of them, you know, if you're gonna accept all those alternates, you gotta go with the little bit or then, so unless there's some reason that they're not any good, but I would think Rick Electric would be good.
Okay, David, you're shaking your head, you're good with that?
I agree with Ronnie, I agree with Ronnie.
Okay, Sandy, you agree? Amy, you agree?
I do agree.
Laura, you agree? Okay?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Sandy agrees too, okay, so we got any further discussion, board member? No, all right, hearing no further discussion, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote, please, uh, Laura?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Sandy? Sandy, are you good?
Hi.
And David?
Hi.
And myself as I, motion carries six zero. Um, and I'm sure we'll be having uh more discussion at uh. Site leadership, or not site leadership, oversight. Okay, uh, ten point one, this is an additional action item, this is the MSBA contract for the superintendent search, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ronnie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. All right, I, let's have some discussion on this, members, and everybody get a chance to review the, um. Uh, proposal. That I had sent everybody.
I did, and I like it, and the only thing just for the public is just to maybe um throw it out there how much this is gonna cost the school district, which. Um, considering we're looking for a new superintendent, I think it's something that we need to do, so.
Yeah, so the 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 cost is eighty-five hundred dollars. Um, the people that are on the committee search, their uh their resumes are beyond impeccable. Um. Just just to give the public an idea of the tentative timeline, so early September. Um, to early November, we would hold a initial planning meeting with the MSB, and I think we're gonna, we're gonna talk about some dates at the end of this meeting. Um, about having them do a virtual meeting with us. Um, we will approve all advertising material, including hiring criteria. Um, we are going to, um. You know, we're gonna meet with them frequently throughout the year, and they have created a tentative timeline schedule that I think is. Uh, phenomenal, and I think they're, I think they will do a good job for us, they've never, I've I've been satisfied with everything they've done for us. Um, whether it's going down to MSBA training or reaching out their services, they're they're just top-notch, so. Uh, Ronnie, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I'm fully in favor of this, uh, the thing you could probably ask them is, I'm not sure, cuz I haven't ever worked with MSBA on it, is. Do they assign like one lead person that covers us, I know like the last search. Keith Klein or something covered it, and I don't know if the, one of these that they pick up. I was kinda looking through the list there, and since he's somewhat familiar, I'd be somewhat familiar too with Terry. To come in and possibly do it, but I don't know if that's how they do it or not for one person leading.
I I will um email Barb, that's my contact, Ronnie, and I will ask her that question, and I'll report back at our next board meeting to you on that.
Otherwise, everything looks about the same as we've done other groups in the past, and. You know, you gotta have your focus groups and get all your input coming in first and all that solicitation and. And actually recommending names and soliciting names is probably one of the bigger things they can do that the rest of us wouldn't have any idea about. And I guess I'm sure that thing said narrowly, but I guess just wanna make sure too that they also check. North Dakota too, which I think they do.
Okay. No, that's a great question, go ahead, Amy.
And just to state too, um, that cost of the class that they're gonna give us, which helps us, you know. Ask certain interview questions and those kinds of things, since, you know, all of us aside from Ronnie has never, I know Sandy's done it too, but anyway. Um, that's included in that eighty-five hundred dollars, so I think that class is well worth it.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out, Amy, yes. Uh, any other board members have any thoughts, David?
I just, I think for the price, this is incredible value, if you were to do a search in private sector. It's not uncommon to spend twenty, thirty thousand dollars for. Doing a search like this, so, um. You know, the price is. Very much worth it.
Yeah, I I agree, I was very pleasantly surprised when I saw the cost, I I was anticipating it to be higher, so. Yes, very satisfied. Okay, if there's no further comment, board members, let's go ahead and vote on this, we'll do a roll call here, Laura?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
And myself, I, motion carries seven or six to zero. Okay, on to the last thing here, um. Future board meetings, we will be having a fiscal personnel meeting at five o'clock. On Monday, August tenth, twenty twenty. Um, I think I'm comfortable. Moving ahead here and starting to. To, let's have a quick discussion, board members, I'm feeling comfortable that we need to start meeting in person again. Our life is going to revolve around wearing a mask indoors. Um, now for a long time, and I think that um we need to show our community that we can get together and. Make decisions in person, so. I'm I'm looking for your thoughts uh or concerns. Um, Amy?
Um, I have to agree with that, I think we kinda, you know, just need to get back to what we can be doing, um, I also saw on the declaration from the governor. Um, and I don't know, for open meetings, um, you do not have to wear a mask, um, and I don't know if that's just for roll call accountability or what the case may be, but. Uh, I did see that, so it's probably optional. Um. Brian, as long as you kinda feel comfortable or however we would work that with you as we, you know, accommodate as best as possible, so.
I'll be there.
All right. I'm just gonna ask each board member, Sandy?
I'm very comfortable, we've been working since June without, I mean, we've been wearing masks. My classroom is at full capacity, I'm ready to go.
Okay, Laura?
I'm hesitant, um, I mean. I'll have to think about it for a little bit, and I'm. Three of my kids have had pneumonia this month, so I'm a little. Gun shy. I'm I'm gun shy on that, so, but I guess my question is if. You know. If we do go back to being in person and whether it's myself or another board member or whomever is not comfortable going, is that something that they'd be able to attend? Virtually?
Yes, we we would make that accommodation, absolutely, so everybody keep your computers. Um, for say if someone comes down with a fever or you have, you know, you test positive. But you're feeling fine and you still wanna participate, we will work out those details, so. Um, thank you for your honesty, Laura, we appreciate that, um, David?
Yep, I'm ready to go back to. Meeting.
Okay, Ronnie?
Yeah, definitely, you know, I've been working with all the people around the farm, I've been going to church on Sundays, you know, meeting people, going to eat uptown afterwards, uh. I don't particularly like the mask, but uh unfortunately, the August tenth may be a meeting that I'm in the field and I can't make it, so we'll just see what happens, but.
I completely understand, so I think right now we'll move forward, and if someone is not comfortable attending, we will, um. We we will definitely do virtual as well, so we'll get that worked out, so, um, I just appreciate you all being flexible. And, um, you know, I, like I said, I think this is our new reality moving forward, and and I think it would be just wonderful for us to take that step forward. So, um, with that being said, we're just gonna plan in-person meeting. Um, so let's get the capacity. Numbers, so we know how many uh visitors that can be allowed at our next meeting. Um, we'll we'll figure that out once the governor makes his announcement. Uh, the next, the school board meeting will follow. Uh, that fiscal personnel meeting at five, uh, we'll have our school board meeting at six. And then on uh Monday, August seventeenth, we will have a meeting at five thirty. And this is to go over the, um. Oh, what did Brooke put it, it's something to do with the election filing and all that kinda stuff we have to do. Now. To piggyback off that date, that is one of the dates that um MSBA provided to us that they would be available to do a online. Course with the school board on uh hiring a superintendent. So I'm gonna find my email here. With the dates, and I emailed all of you, um, the the dates that were provided were Tuesday, August eleventh. Four to six, Monday, August seventeenth, six to eight. Tuesday, August eighteenth, six to eight, and Monday, August thirty-first, six to eight P M. Um. I know Ronnie, what are you thinking for harvest, are you? Are you thinking you'll be going August seventeenth?
Uh, yeah, later be better, I know, let's see, seventeenth, that's a Monday.
I I would prefer us look at the Monday dates and scratch the Tuesday, Tuesdays are just, you know, Mondays are our board nights.
Yeah, cuz I know the eighteenth, I gotta start beats for Felton, so you know, Monday night would be better, and. I don't know, can any way to make it work that we can do that right after the other one?
Well, that's what I was thinking is that, you know, if we have to meet on the seventeenth, then why not just do this? Right after six to eight to not make another meeting on the thirty-first, if we can make that work, I think that makes the most sense to piggyback off each other. Do we have thumbs up from the board members on that, I see Laura's, everybody's thumbs up, okay. So, um, I will email Brooke and have her, I'll email Brooke and Barb Dorn. About the August seventeenth date, so please put that on your calendar that we will have. A meeting and uh start that that process of looking for our next superintendent, so. Thank you all for your taking the time to do that. So, okay. Anything else we need to add?
Question? I think the date or the location for the meetings, I assume we're gonna be in Glendon at the media center?
Uh, yes, we will plan on meeting at, um. In the media center, go ahead, Amy?
Um, oh, the groundbreaking ceremony is August fourth at one o'clock, is that correct, Brian?
Yeah, I believe so, that's that's the latest I've seen on the update, Chris, have you seen anything? Any other information, Lee and I haven't talked about it. Any any further yet at this point.
Okay, just double checking.
No, we haven't discussed anything further, no, it's still August fourth as a placeholder for now.
I'm assuming it's something that we'll talk about tomorrow.
Okay, perfect.
Nancy, I have, I have a question before we adjourn.
Yep, go ahead, Sandy.
I'm just wondering, I know we got the parent survey, Brian, but did you touch base at all on the, what the teachers? Survey results were?
Um. The only thing we worked on today was. Everything with the parent survey, cuz it just came out.
Okay.
So, I mean. I think they're going over. Um, the the only, there's the statewide. The statewide staff one that came out about a week and a half ago. Um, you know, that's, so there's been, there's been a couple of surveys. But uh, the one that came out lately is is the, or the one that we did over the weekend was the parent one. So, that's why we touched on that tonight.
All right, well, everyone, so nice to see everybody. Um, we're all holding our breath until Thursday. So, uh, breathe a little bit and uh we will be uh seeing each other in person August tenth. And as always, um, you know, we'll keep communicating and uh, you know, anxiously to hear uh on the building progress and uh everybody stay well, okay? All right, signing off all.
Thank you.